Father Sprig, dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and all the many blessings that we thank you once again for the kindness as a council of coming together and we pray that you give us the knowledge and wisdom that it takes to lead our community in our action. We pray for the country and the women that have served it now or currently serve it and we pray that the special for the soldiers and for the soldiers that you will bring them back from the South and South with big I do. We pray for the city, especially the ones that we know that you put thy hand around them, restored them back from the mental one hell with big I do. We ask you to give us over saints Christ only we pray. Amen. Chief Dowell, you can pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alvin Clubb. Alvin Dale.
Present.
Vice Mayor Dotson.
Present.
Alvin Elder.
Come here.
Alvin Lightfoot.
Here.
Alvin Nander.
Present.
Alvin Clubb.
We have a call. Uh, but before we had started, I want to apologize again, especially to the visitors that was here last week, uh, that I know that some of you traveled, uh, seventy-five, a hundred miles to get here. We did not have a call, apologize, but thank you for coming back. Okay, everyone is here but Alvin Clubb, I made a motion to approve the minutes of last month made.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Alvin Bill Linder, second.
Second.
Second by Alvin Lightfoot, any discussion? I'll forward the motion, let it know with saying aye. I'll oppose, like so, motion pass. Uh, additions or deletions to the agenda? I've got one to add, uh, it'll be number five, and, uh, we're going to talk about CDL, commercial driving license training. Uh, I have my lays and Mr. Richard Bennett here that's going to talk about a program that is going to start with city employees. If you add that number five, please. Okay, is there a motion to go ahead and add that to the agenda?
Still no.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Ken Dotson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alvin Bill Linder, any discussion? I'll forward the motion, let it know with saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, like so, motion pass, that'd be out of number five. Uh, under, we have nothing under open business. New business will be out of number one, downcoming revalidation, Mr. Gene Gann. Come on up, Gene.
I'm going to be short tonight. We, it brought our attention that our banners that we have most of the year around the square and around town, um, D banners, have become very faded and look pretty bad. Uh, banners are up now, Christmas banners were up for a short period of time, um, so they're in pretty good shape. But these banners, we, I think the last we bought then was two thousand and fourteen, best we could tell, uh, and we would like to get approval to, uh, purchase new banners, uh, same design, um, for amount not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Gene, we got quotes on that, didn't we?
Yes, we do.
Any questions, Mr. Gann?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Mayor Ken Dotson.
Make a second.
Second, uh, by Alvin Bruce Elder, any discussion? I'll forward the motion, let it know with saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, like so, motion pass. Any other business, Mr. Gann?
Not for me, I think, um, think we're going to have aura rate, or you're going to talk about upgrades or the growth or other projects, so that's for me.
Come on up, Mr. Evans.
So four items to discuss with you tonight, first is the, uh, an update on our T-DOT side of all the projects on, uh, East Wall and East Main, um, we talked to define the outer construction plans approved in there now, must call the right of way acquisition phase. Being a T-DOT project, it means in the T-DOT land. Uh, we have a few, uh, handful of temporary construction leachments and a couple of permanent access leachments to acquire as part of the project. Uh, we know all the property owners, we have had numerous discussions with them already, we know that they're rebuilding numbers, yet for all this, it is a T-DOT project, we have to go through the process, we have to retain the services of a T-DOT crew appraisal and have each of those leases of property appraised, uh, and then make the property owners aware of your pressure, appraisal before, uh, we can negotiate, uh, the transaction. So we're in that process now, um, just based on time. Right now, we're anticipating, and I think this is a pretty good schedule, uh, we're anticipating that we would advertise this project next April, advertise the bid with construction starting, uh, probably, uh, June or July following that. Our courthouse square project is moving along nicely too, we have completed what's called the environmental phase, the NEPA phase, and, uh, our consultants have submitted to T-DOT, uh, a request for a, um, categorical exclusion, and we're from having to be the other, uh, environmental work beyond, I started, we expect that to be approved shortly, uh, they will be, um, then going for the work of construction plans, we expect that project to be advertised next August as well. Third project is our South Church Street project that is funded by that last original commission in Park, in Park out of City. Uh, three weeks ago, I guess, we had a, a public meeting in the street, uh, where we had almost all the property owners and almost all the tenants involved, we probably had forty people, and it's really good meeting, good interchange lasted, um, over forty-five minutes or so, and, uh, the primary concern of the property owners and tenants there was Park. The good news is that because of the investment that we've made, because of the investment that the public sectors made down there, uh, things are beginning to progress, and with the dance studio, with salons, the, uh, the retail shops, as well as, uh, iron and oak, uh, parking along South Church Street is a trend. Uh, so it was proposed by those, uh, citizens that were there, and we all agreed, uh, Charlie Smith, the largest, uh, attended as well, uh, Mayor Hage, myself, we all agreed that, uh, maximizing parking should be one of our goals in this, uh, that last original commission, uh, project. So what we're going to propose to you tonight, there's an exhibit on the wall there, is that we, uh, as part of this, uh, ARC project, that we make Spring Street and South Church Street one-way pairs, opposed to two-way traffic. That, uh, South Church Street would go northbound toward the square, Spring Street would go southbound from the square toward Railroad, which would allow us parking on both sides of the roadway. Uh, there has been some conversation about whether we have parallel parking on both sides of the road, or parking on only one side of the road, and have angle parking, and we will be looking at that with our consultants to see which one of those two options maximizes the amount of parking on the roadway. Uh, there's no reason, as we've discussed, there's no reason not to proceed now, uh, we're making those two roadways one-way pairs, uh, and that is exactly what the, the, uh, the tenants and the property owners asked us to do, to proceed forward, so, uh, I'm asking this project to, uh, approve and authorize, uh, the mayor's staff to proceed with, uh, making those two roadways one-way pairs and signing them accordingly. Now, look for a motion in that regard.
I think that, uh, before we do a motion, I want to be fair, I know Mr. Warren has, uh, talked to me about this, his concerns, uh, and Jay, if, if, if I'm correct, you, it's been a while, but I think that you told me that you had some concerns about your, uh, horse trailer, cattle trailer getting back up and, and.
Getting in and out of my driveway at home.
Right. So, we.
I wasn't informed of making three weeks ago.
Yeah, I think it was the property owners and the business.
Well, I'm property owner.
Well, yeah, but, so we, I, I brought in, uh, Mr. Pete, uh, uh, we had a meeting, uh, last week, and also we're talking about the, uh, traffic control devices. With what they are, uh, proposing, uh, do you see that still being a problem, Jay?
Yes, one way is going to be a problem.
Okay, be, but because.
They're either going or coming, it's going to be a problem. Because I'm making a turn with the driver getting out of my driveway, you take a twenty-foot shoulder, you can't turn.
Well, you don't, you go straight up church.
Yeah, but why about getting back in? Getting in my driveway with the driver, I'm going to have to make that turn.
So we, uh, I, I asked our street superintendent, uh, how that looked down there, if you turned, uh, in by on McHenry.
Was that the one behind the twin lakes?
Mc- McHenry, they were outside of California, Kenny Williams.
Oh, yeah.
And you went all the way down to Railroad and you made a left, and then you cut back right. Uh, there, there seemed to be some discussion that, because I, I brought that up.
Mm-hmm.
That you might, that you could make that turn right there, and then coming, coming down the driveway, it'd be a, you can make a left, go back the way, or go straight up Church Street. Is it, Ray, is that correct? Is that?
Hey, what, what we look, so out of Mr. Warren's driveway, he's got a straight shot from his driveway up into Church, uh, South Church Street, uh, as he's leaving, when he's coming back, uh, obviously you can't come down South Church Street for that same, uh, you know, but you could come down Spring or McHenry, either one, onto Railroad, and then there's a pretty good bit of room to make a, a ready to turn up the driveway, uh, back into this property, and that's what we all, uh, sort of looked at, and was concerned about, frankly.
But once you make it one way to Center Street, and then pass that and have a turn on it, you've got all that public parking at Old Shirt Factory lot, people parking beneath you right there is free public parking, that's what it's for.
Well, I think Wayne, you was talking about to, that you was going to take a little that sidewalk off to even give this more of room.
Yes, change the radius on that.
Okay, and, uh, then there shouldn't be, uh, an issue.
Well, then you might face loud trucks and semi trucks coming into Twin Lakes old. I mean, you gonna put.
Yeah, I, I.
Maybe garden daisies or hip hens.
Yeah, and we discussed that, if they was to come in McHenry, uh, or Spring, and then come back up Church, uh, we're, we're thinking it'd be a clear shot all the way, all the way up to the library, and then they can make that right or straight, but that's what we, that's what we discussed.
But again, there in the winter time, and it snows, make it on my, my driveway with some speed.
Would a red light be there?
I mean, why not put no parking signs on one side of the street? Because like I said, that you've got there, oh, Twin Lakes building, that gravel parking lot, and you've got that public parking there at Old Shirt Factory lot, you've got plenty of parking right there.
Again, the, the merchants and, and, uh, a large amount of the property owners, uh, this is a request from them.
But there, yeah, most of your merchants and your property owners ain't owned property very long either. Our family come this way for over a hundred years.
You're right.
You know, they live driving down, it won't take over.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, but they own property now, and they have a business down there now.
Well, you don't just own any of Chinese stuff, they don't have stuff left.
Right, this is just a request from them, and, uh, to the council, if they want to move forward, uh.
And why don't we worry about the streets down there before, because they're in a pit of shit. I've had to have my wife's vehicle aligned twice in the last six months, or there's too many holes and corrupt, won't worry about that, or we worry about.
I can understand, yeah, but, well, as you heard Mr. Evans say, that, uh, we're going to be making a large investment down South Church Street in this grants that we've got, I agree, uh, the road's not in good shape, and to be quite honest with you, it won't be for a while, uh, and, uh, I know that, uh, I've talked to Wayne about this, to make the necessary patch, the patches, uh, where it needs to be made, uh, but it is scheduled to be resurfaced, it was scheduled to be resurfaced after we laid the water lines, but due to the, uh, all the overhead lines that's going to be buried inside, uh, it didn't make a whole lot of sense to paint it, as, as expensive as asphalt is right now, and then go back and dig right up. I mean, I, I'm trying to answer that question the best I can, that, that was the thought.
Okay, if you don't make this a one-way, I won't have my car getting up there in the winter. Is the city going to rave and salt my driveway, or I can't keep it clean where I can't get up there?
You, you don't want salt in your driveway.
I salt it every year.
Yeah, yeah.
I salt it every year.
Usually if it's not T-DOT approved, it, that's salt it right through your driveway on it, Wayne, and then, of course.
Well, pavement ain't.
Oh, is yours concrete?
No, mine's asphalt.
Okay.
It ain't sealed up.
Because I mean, I have to, I start about, maybe get the corner of any of our building, and I hammer it to get up there. I have to, if there's much snow or ice or whatever.
Well, I mean, you, you're talking about special locations, and I get it, and I understand it, uh, but, uh, as far as coming on your property, we can't do that. I mean, we cleared the right of way for you, which probably goes up, I, what's your right of way there, Wayne, do you know?
No, not that I've painted it properly, but.
So, I mean, we can clear the right of way, is what we can do, uh, but, uh, try to assist you a little bit, but, I mean, if it was to get like that, I would trust that you'd do what you needed to do to, to get back up to your home, no, I, I don't think anybody's going to restrict you from, uh, residence, or, or try to put any, uh, make it hard for anyone living down there. Again, this is a request, uh, by the property owners and the business owners, uh, that is located on South Church Street. So.
May I make a request referring to this, on Church Street and maybe on Spring, but the parking's not like that on Spring. Can you block off like ten feet back from the intersection, so that people can't park right up to the intersection? Because today, you could not see.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I, I'm reading, it's.
Yes, since, uh, only as part of this project, we put crosswalks into every intersection, and then from the crosswalk, a certain distance back is where the parking starts, so it essence typical achieve exactly what you're talking about, and I agree with it. Uh, uh, one thing that's, that's, that we have observed, and we have heard from the citizens of, of the tenants and property owners around the square, is how critical the proximity to parking is to the rooftops. Even though we've got a perfectly good, uh, public parking lot on Main Street, uh, people who shop on the square won't park there, and, and they want to get as close to the front door of the building as they possibly can, and, and maybe you and I've had that conversation with, uh, with some of the, the tenants and employees, parking where they should be reserved and spacious for citizens, but I think that's what's riding the, the folks on South Church Street, is that they, um, they just want to, to get parking as closely convenient to their stores as they possibly can.
Right.
Well, you know, if, uh, owners of the businesses wouldn't park on the side right close to our business, they might be adequate parking without this.
And we, uh, we discussed that, we did discuss that, so.
I mean, you know, if they're, if they're customers, they need to decide.
Yeah, and we have discussed that, I promise, and, and we still discuss it about on the square too. Okay, uh, you've heard, uh, the request, uh, from Mr. Evans, uh, and from the property owners and merchants, is there a motion to move forward?
Yeah, I'd like to motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Mayor Ken Dotson, is there a second? To go with the one-way? Motion, is there a second?
I'm not going to second, but I do think we should, uh, probably look at it a little more. I'd be okay with getting more information before we move forward with it. I like the idea of the one-way, but I think it needs to make sure it suits everybody before we record.
Well, uh, of course, we have Charlie Smith with us from the largest design group, which are engineers.
Yeah.
And, uh, if you have any questions, uh, we've got a motion and second, we could certainly ask, uh, Charlie, uh, which is, uh, which will, can you talk just a little bit about the traffic lights, Ray, what you, what's this to do, uh, with the traffic lights?
So the only traffic signal that will be affected by changing these one on the street would be the signal on Spring Street. Uh, we have, uh, three of those, of those four approaches are civilized now, we would only need two of those four approaches civilized, so we basically have a mass harm consensus for the signal, simply after it be removed, uh, that's a, a very minor thing. So, let's, to answer your question, um, we still are, need to determine whether or not, uh, number one, angle parking, symbol of that now the square is feasible, uh, and whether or not that achieves more parking than, and, and that, that's only feasible, if it's feasible, it's only feasible on one side of the one-way, uh, roadway, and then compare that to parking on both sides, with parallel parking, and since, since it's running, it achieves the, the right intersection. So it's not, um, from that perspective, it's not something that we can run out and do more, but still have, have a, uh, some, some refinements to make to, to see what the final works are.
So I, I'm a great, I, I've not really heard the whole program, and I, I wanted to certainly listen to Jay's, uh, his requests for getting into his area, and, uh, I, I don't know anything about how that works where he is, and I'm sure he's got a certain concern for it, but I think we could certainly do something that'll work with him to try to get this resolved. Uh, I, I like the plan, I like the one-way, I do, and, uh, but I, I think we can certainly work with one person to try to help him along with, uh, in this resolved.
So, no, sorry, go ahead, sir, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt your party. Uh, the, again, talking to, uh, uh, Mr. Warren about his concern about the cattle trailer, or the horse trailer up his, his driveway, which is, is in the business, I get it, and, uh, but we, we feel that, uh, that with the round, uh, that there's going to be an option, is to go down, uh, McHenry over to the end, make a left at, uh, um, Ray, can you point that out, McHenry, uh, and then going to the end of Railroad, and then perhaps for his residence, I don't know.
Yeah, so there, there would be two options, I guess, you could go into McHenry down to Railroad, and Railroad back into the driveway, or you can come down Spring Street to Railroad, and then Railroad into the driveway, or Franky can come down, uh, through the pasture as well, and you can.
But there again, a lot of times I have to back my driver into the driveway if I'm not going up and pop. Well, I'm going to be going the wrong way somehow or another, because I've got, I'm going up to Church Street to back in. I mean.
But you, you're just talking about, I mean, going up fifty foot and then backing it all the way back up to your residence, is what you're saying.
No, I'll back up into my drive, you know, I'll go down Church Street, get lined up straight, and back, back up into the driveway.
Right. I, I understand your concern, I don't think anybody's going to be there, uh, I mean, you gotta, you gotta get home, I, I don't think anybody's going to be there, uh, to write you a ticket.
Well, that depends on who's got that day.
Good, good one, good one, good one.
That's why I said make it a one-way to Center Street, and then open it up, I mean, I've got plenty of room, people can go and come that way.
When we had this meeting or hearing, or whatever you want to call it, was more invited to listen to that, if we did, I don't remember.
It was, uh, it was publicly advertised, and I know the chamber sent out notices to this entire membership.
It was not a board meeting.
But what about the people, not a member that owns property there?
Again, it was publicly advertised in the newspaper.
I don't read the newspaper.
All right, we've got a motion.
This mayor, I would suggest after listening to the, to the double comments, there is no absolute urgency to that, that issue made from the mayor next week, uh, I would suggest that we further this issue when we, uh, so, maybe, uh, have a presentation that's a little more thorough than last night, and, and then with, with forward progress, we choose to, uh, mention.
Okay.
A workstation. A workstation. If your workstation or a, a regular meeting, I would, it's your pleasure.
Yes, so we, uh, Ken, I just need you to withdraw, if, if you want to.
Certainly withdraw my motion.
All right, motion withdrew, uh, so, uh, we'll talk about it again, uh, which we will meet on January fifth, it'll be a little bit different, use New Year's following where it does, but it'll be Thursday, July, uh, January, not July, which will, January fifth.
Will, will that meeting be open to the public?
Absolutely, absolutely.
We're going to discuss it, so I can come.
Every meeting is open to the public.
That's right.
Well, I mean, I didn't know, this was, well, that was the first time I've been around the town, so.
Right, absolutely, so, uh, we probably have a.
And actually, it would probably be a good idea for somebody representing the city just go to each individual business owner down there, tell them we're having a meeting, need to be up there, we fix and change the rules or whatever, they need to.
That's already been done, Dave.
They can do it again.
We'll, we'll make sure that they're aware of the.
Right.
They just, they need to be here.
That's right. One last hour, Mr. Ray.
All right.
There is an opportunity, uh, from the, from the property transportation for what is known as a traffic signal management program grant. Uh, it is a grant that is a one-hundred percent T-DOT-funded grant, up to a hundred thousand dollars, with no local match, and it is for improvements to existing traffic signal locations and traffic signal systems. Uh, we, and that grant is, uh, I think it's between second to actually two thousand. Your blessing, we're going to propose that we, uh, install pedestrian signals and pedestrian bush buttons on it for the owners of the square. Uh, we've had conversations with T-DOT for years about that, uh, when we did our, uh, two thousand and seventeen enhancement grant project, uh, the T-DOT, uh, Minnesota Traffic Safety and Safety Committee, so they realized that consisted that we actually put conduit and bull boxes on all the corners, and Chief Dowell and I, his crew, uh, went down this afternoon and confirmed the dosing there in place, and the blank conduits are all, are all up there in place, so, um, we want to propose, uh, that T-DOT fund the pedestrian signals and pedestrian bush button, back at the water, as such, uh, as part of this grant program, and rest assured, you can reject it from this law.
I, I, I appreciate this applying for that, because we do get calls quite a bit about pedestrian signals, uh, that can be used on the square, and a, a great example is Christmas in the country, uh, to let alone, uh, uh, we've got a very vibrant downtown, uh, and pedestrian signals are needed at the end of the day, and I.
And that is a one-hundred percent grant.
It's a one-hundred percent grant unless you receive a hundred thousand dollars, and then by now, that you may, you may submit the investment, a hundred thousand dollars, especially since we already have a private deposit.
I'm going to have a motion, we'll go up with the grant.
Motion made by Alvin Lightfoot, second by Alvin Linder, any discussion? I'll forward the motion, let it know with saying aye. I'll oppose, like so, motion pass. Anything else, Ray? Thank you. Ms. Shannon Cantor?
Thank you. Um, just got a few updates from the chamber, wanted to talk about the Christmas party just a little bit, so this was our largest. So this was our largest parade ever with 181 entries yesterday. It was great. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank everybody who helped coordinate the event, lineup and the traffic and all who made the parade to make this one the best. We, the judges, they were all from out of town. And they gave three major awards yesterday, which was the Hallmark Award, which was the best overall, which went to Alheim Customs. The Grand Mall Award went to Grant Septu Services. And the judges' award went to the Fun 530 Club, which was a group of about 15 side-by-sides that were all decorated. So it was a great event. And if y'all missed it, make sure you go to either Overton Events or Overton County News to watch that live thing. It was awesome. And just a few other events that we are having this week. This Friday, we will be having a back-to-back ribbon cutting with Ruby and Lee and Livingston Dance Studio, both celebrating the grand opening and relocation on South Church Street. We invite everyone out to that at 10:00 a.m. this Friday. Also, ice skating in the park will be available on Friday, Saturday and Sunday this weekend from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. every day. This is a free event at Central Park. Skate rental's for free as well. So make sure you come out and enjoy ice skating in downtown Livingston. A big thank you to the Downtown Innovation Committee and the City of Livingston for making this happen for the community. And a couple things about Livingston in general. I spoke last time about applying for the $100,000 Downtown Improvement Grant. I'm happy to say that we are, we were awarded the $100,000 grant for our downtown improvements.
Congratulations.
Thank you. This will be for the downtown area. And the improvements that are covered are mostly for exterior improvements, including signage, painting, awnings, lighting, doors, entryways and other exterior improvements. The grant contract will be signed mid-January, so more information will be given to the downtown businesses and property owners mid-January. We do plan on having a required meeting for all of those who are wanting to apply for this grant so that they will know everything they need to know about being successful in this grant application. We'll make sure that we inform everybody in the time of manner so they can make sure that they attend that. And lastly, we were chosen as one of, one of three communities in the Upper Cumberland, by the Upper Cumberland Tourism Association, as being a community that creates a hallmark experience for their residents and visitors. We're very thankful for this, and it has certainly been evident with the popularity of all of our Christmas events so far. Our downtown right now is more beautiful than ever. And a big thank you for this, to the city for all they've done with those efforts with the new lights and, and the funding that they helped us with for Christmas in the country. And the other two communities that remain as well were Smithville and Grantville. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Cantor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two on your new business will be Mr. Alan Leverfeld, Symmetry Gas. Alan should be with us on Zoom. Alan?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Again, my name's Alan, we're out with Symmetry Energy Solutions. I was there last week, but I do appreciate it off there to be able to present to you in Zoom today. Want to give you a quick update on natural gas. Pretty much since I was there at your last meeting in June, June 6th, quite a bit has happened in the natural gas futures market. Just kind of recapping, we had a, Symmetry had a weapon R for our customers back in November, so I kind of used some of the topics that we put out there and, and just kind of a historical type thing as well as some, some short-term outlooks for the rest of winter and some longer-term outlook beyond that. We've gone, you know, I guess the word tonight on the natural gas prices is volatility. We've gone from a 25-year low in the daily close since June 25th of 2020 at a dollar 40 a day. This past Friday, 22nd, a 14-year high of $9.68. An enormous spread in the market in two years. Different things have caused the volatility, as you know. We've, we've had a lot of changes in the market as far as, you know, the war in Europe or Ukraine and water volatility. So a couple of things that really domestically here at home drives us is the weather changes, power generation, where is the natural gas going? Is it trying to go to L G L in the country? Those type things. So currently, the country is producing about 100 B C F a day on the supply side. The problem with that is most of the gas we have on the demand side is 106 B C F a day. So there's about a 6% discrepancy there. Sometimes storage makes up for that. The problem that we saw the high gas prices back in August was because of the heat and how hot it was in July and August. It made the power generators kick on and create a short supply in market because they were burning so much natural gas, it took away from putting the gas in the ground for storage. The good part of that is in September, there are about 10 hours, they had a couple of miles in October. So those two months and the first of November was fairly warm. So that duration of time allowed storage to catch up. So we actually, in a positive outlook, we actually got caught up as a nation to the five-year storage average, which is a good thing because we got to go into winter needing to allow the storage to pull out. That in itself has kept prices trying to go down. Every, you know, looking at, at November, you know, we saw some pretty cold weather right before Thanksgiving and mid-Thanksgiving. The last few weeks, we saw some warmer weather. It's warmer than ever. So, but now the weather is going to be turning out more seasonal, more normal. You know, just like tonight, the city of Livingston is, it's 43 degrees. It feels like 40 outside. So it's turned back cooler again. Livingston's forecast for the next two weeks, I'm not forecasting a white Christmas, but it's in the color, so to speak. The weather, you know, the end, not this week, but the end of next week, around the 22nd, 23rd, we're going to see the high teens of what was at night and the upper twenties for the high in the days. So winter's coming back. I'm not a, I'm not a weather forecaster, but that's, we'll see if the weather managers are. Looking a little farther out and trying to get into some gas pricing type scenarios with the supply and demand problems that we're seeing, most of Livingston's gas, as I've mentioned in the past, comes from Texas and Louisiana. That's where most of the nation's gas comes from, along with Pennsylvania, West Virginia, Ohio, New York, and then most of, a lot of it's from Texas. So, but most of the gas is coming from Louisiana, Texas coast. Well, and I mentioned this last time, there's a pre-4 Texas facility that shut down their L G facility because of a fire. So that led to B C F on the market over the past several weeks, which they're projected to come back on in April. So I think that's kind of in, in the mix of the pricing in the market. So that in itself is going to help get L G out of the country. It's going to decrease our supply a little bit here. But when the European and Japan Asian prices are trading somewhere between $20 and $30 a decathlon, they're going to try to get all their resources together and invest in the L G out of the country for those prices. That's part of our issue here in the States is investing in new pipelines here. And this country is going to be an issue going forward with European prices as high as they are. Looking at short-term, the rest of this winter, I think I mentioned this last meeting, Livingston has some fixed price positions at an average of $3.02. And that's at about 65% of your, your supply. Over the past year, we have averaged $6.64 per this year. So we've been well below the market overall, which is a great place to be. And, and you know, going forward through January, February, March, you're, you're in a good, an active position with those fixed prices at 302. And that's looking in with the market. So just a few, some outlook, I don't know, I'm trying not to go too long. I'll, I'll pull up some summer pricing and let you, and next winter. This summer, and I'm talking April through October, is like a 510 average where last year averaged over $6. Next winter's pricing is, is around 555. If you look at calendar 23, it's 547. Calendar 24 is 464. Calendar 25 is 455. So that in itself is telling us that the further you look out, the market's trying to, to decline in pricing. If we can get the volatility out of the market as far as European L G prices, some of our weather-related anomalies that we saw, if we, if we have a good, steady, normal winter, January, February, March, and pricing that, or storage doesn't completely get empty, it's going to be a good, good summer pricing and for next year. So I guess I've been in natural gas business for a long time and I don't wish for any extreme weather whatsoever, extreme warm or extreme cold. So if we just have such a normal rest of the winter, I think we're going to be in good shape. And that'll give Princeton an opportunity to do some more fixed pricing in the future. And that's, that's about, you know, weather-related, January, February, March, it looks like it's going, and you're forecasting a normal winter for our area. So hopefully that stays true and has true fruition. I mean, have you tried to answer any questions? But that's, that's what I have now.
Thank you, Alan. Has anybody got any questions for Alan about any of the natural gas? Okay. Alan, thank you very much. It's always a pleasure for you giving a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
You too.
Item number three, we have H R Solutions by Design LLC, Ms. Cindy Varesch-Bryant. I contacted Ms. Bryant about a, trying to get a obsolete pay scale back up and running for our senior employees. We've had a couple of conversations and Zoom calls. She was out of town last Monday, but is back in town now and in person. Tell us a little bit about H R Solutions, Ms. Cindy.
Absolutely. So good evening. So again, my name is Cindy Varesch-Bryant. My company is H R Solutions by Design. And I started the business in 2009 after spending about 25 years in corporate America. I finished up with Eaton Corporation while I was living here, but I was commuting every week to New Jersey, so I was working up there during the week and coming home on weekends. And then the recession hit in 2009. My options were to move to New Jersey or moving to Eaton, Missouri, Minnesota. And I thought, you know what? I live in God's country. I don't know if I want to do any of those. And so I started the business. The idea behind the business was to bring Fortune 250, Fortune 100 expertise in human resources to small to mid-sized organizations that either cannot afford a full-time H R person or quite frankly, just don't want to add that to their account and burden. So we have, by the grace of God, I've been in business since 2009. God is my business development manager. When I started, as I said, I'd lived here for a couple of years, but didn't know anybody. And when you're in Nashville and surrounding areas, you don't do business unless you know somebody. And I didn't know a soul. So the deal I made with God and He led me in that direction was that I would go wherever He sent me if He would just make those divine connections. And so He has been very faithful over that time period, and I have tried to be equally faithful. So we do all aspects of human resources. So we work with companies with as small as five employees all the way up that we do have contracts from time to time with multinational companies like Exgev Logistics and Brita Lay and some of the others in terms of doing projects. And so our services not only include helping our clients with compliance, whether that be any of the plethora of legislation that you may see from F M L A to F L S A to ADA and so forth and so on. We also help with learning and development solutions, so training, development, whatever the case may be there. And then finally, with what we call business solutions and a wage survey, wage and benefit survey falls into that category. So we help our organizations take a look at what are the repetitive wages, the prevailing rates and those types of things, and build a compensation philosophy and a compensation strategy to be able to meet their goals. And every organization's a little different in terms of what their goals are. This year, as you are likely aware, has been a very unusual year in that we have seen wages and inflation and all of those things skyrocket. And so everybody, you are not alone at all. I got a call from another, another county today, as a matter of fact, wanting to do a wage survey as well. So probably in this last year, we have done six or seven of these for counties and cities across Tennessee. So with that, what we would propose to do is we will come in, we will work with your team, identify, obviously, look at all the jobs that are included in the survey, make sure we've got job descriptions. We will determine with your expertise, who do you want to compete with or who do you compete with and who do you want to compare with? And then what we're going to do is try to give you reliable, valid data that you can make decisions on, right? And one of the conversations I had with the county this morning that I talked with is, you know, if you are concerned that our business, we may be way behind and how are we ever going to catch up? I will tell you, take deep breath, because whether you are in a municipality, a city, a county, whatever the case may be, in the public sector, there is no private organization that in a wage survey makes all the changes that they may want to make in one year. It tends to be a multi-year approach. Let's figure out what our priorities are and let's figure out, use the data to determine what, where we stand and what changes may need to be made. And then we'll help you lay out a one, a three, a five-year strategy for what do you want to do with that? Because we certainly are all synthetic and cognizant of your budgets and those types of things. So you have a lot of pressures on you from a lot of different areas in what do we do with this data? And I want to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. So if you recall, we had in task, Mr. John Grubbs advise us that we need to take a look at getting someone that could come in and do some comparable salaries to the city of Livingston and provided a list for us to get. And Ms. Bryant called back. Some didn't call back, but she called back. And had, and so we, we've had discussions. I've been gathering data with all the department heads on job descriptions and two additional descriptions that departments that have grew, that has got positions, that is not in their department titles and descriptions. So we've kind of started that with, with the help of Ms. Cindy. And that's kind of, kind of where we are. Her services here, in this contract, it will cost, and you've had it in your packet, $9,900 is what it would cost for the services for H and R Solutions. is what it would cost for the services for H and R Solutions. I think this is a step to get us back up to where we should and to be quite frank, just to see just exactly where we are in comparing with other communities, other towns, other counties. That is perhaps in driving distance than where we are at. We've had turnover in our departments and most of them going to the private sector for other jobs, more money. And to and so I think it's fair. And I think the board did as well by listening to M T A S, Alan Grubbs, to get someone in here that could help us and and lead us. And then at the end of the day, we'll be the one making the decisions. So that's kind of where we are. And I'll be happy to, you've had this in your packets now a couple of weeks since we didn't meet yet last week. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, but I'll probably defer to Ms. Cindy Bryant.
Does this help change the pay scale or not?
It'll get, yeah. And and this would be funded out of each department. So we would be getting the general fund. Of course, we have, you know, water, coal, gas, so so all of those departments would pay a portion of this.
Is this only looking at the pay scale or is there other services that she provides?
We're only in this, we're only looking at pay scale and benefits. So there are other services, but not included in this proposal. We are strictly looking at wager benefits in your sense.
And and Alderman Elder, one of the good things is if I've understood her right, she'll be talking to some of her department heads too, the departments, talking to them about the jobs and any other titles that they may have. And and so we've been working a little bit on that already. And I've told the department heads in our meetings that she'd be calling.
So each department is going to share this call?
Yes, that's correct.
Do you need the motion?
Yes. Motion made by Alderman Bill Lender to accept this agreement with H and R, H R Solutions.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Alderman Elder at ninety-nine hundred dollars. Any discussion?
So when we do this survey, she's going to come back with recommendations what by the employees, correct?
I think she's going to come back and and give us the tools that we can make to make some good, sound decisions.
So she's just going to show us or educate us on how to do it ourselves?
Well, I'm going to come back with some recommendations, which may include some pay scales and some groupings and those types of things. I generally give a variety of recommendations to try to get you where, what your goals are and what you're trying to do. And then so you will, I will come back with some very specific recommendations.
Any other questions? We have a motion second on the floor. No other questions for Ms. Barish-Bryant? Okay, roll call with Ms. Fuss.
Alderman Lister?
Yes.
Alderman Yelker?
Yes.
Alderman Naya?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Mayhew?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passed. Get to work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cindy. Item number four is Performance Services, Mr. Brian Stone. Mr. Stone?
Forrest, thank you. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
So thank you very much. My name is Brian Stone. Craig, this is my colleague, he's Mr. Koppel, I'm in Southern Nashville. We were there last week, so apologies, we couldn't be back scheduling conflicts prevented, didn't allow it this year. But we work for a company called Performance Services. And what we specialize in is identifying and evaluating and trying to fix operational, energy, utility inefficiencies. So we create and buy savings. And then we help you figure out how best to use those savings, whether that be group budget or capital improvements, whatever it may be. So we work with a number of cities and counties across the state as well as nationally to implement as well as design and engineer solutions. So what Mayor Hayes and Vice Mayor Dawson and I talked about in previous kind of iterations is you spend a lot of money on pumping costs on the water, wastewater side. We think there may be some opportunities to reduce that, create some operational savings, whether that be energy or strictly on the operation side. We're not looking to change the way you do business or the way you operate. Simply we can bring out some efficiency and some savings and then figure out the best way to use those savings within your city. So what we've kind of suggested is a three-phased approach. The first phase, we call a preliminary study. It is no cost, it obliges the city to nothing. We would do, spend a day there. Craig, I would like you to spend a day in Livingston, looking through the facilities, identifying savings measures, things that we think the city could implement with our help. And then come back to you with a report stating, here's how much we think those things would cost. Here's how much the return on investment is, how much the savings will be. And then you can decide whether that's something you want to pursue further. Because to be honest, we don't know what your savings there. You guys know your city better than we do, but we want to learn it. We want to understand how you operate. But we do think we can provide some value and help you create some savings on the budget and operations side. There's a couple of things that we do want to look at, and I'm not suggesting this is the route to take. But there are some pretty good incentives on the solar side. So whether we can put in some solar, small solar installations to reduce that pumping cost or offset the cost some, that's something that we would look into. But again, this first step is just a preliminary study for us to come out, take a look, and then come back and write a report to you guys on what the opportunities we think are. And then create a plan for how to implement that we're speaking for. Just moving on, the second phase would be the development and design. And then there would be the implementation. So we would act as engineers and project managers, but use local subcontractors, including your consulting engineers for water, wastewater. We have engineers on staff, Craig is one of our engineers. But we generally do Ted work with the local engineers to make sure that there's the right people with the right solutions, you know, the facilities the best. So again, this first step would be no cost, no obligation to the city, but would just give us the authorization to come and look for a day and bring back a report to you guys. Usually it takes about thirty days, but with the holiday, we push it to late January. It's just my guess for me.
Thank you.
But I'm happy to answer any questions on Performance Services. Again, I'm just, I'm in Nashville, Craig's Cindy Koppel. So we're in Livingston quite a bit. We've got a couple of other projects that we're working with, cities that we're working with just within an hour of you guys, that I'm happy to share outside of this meeting.
So Brian, if I'm understanding you right, in the first phase, you just need permission to kind of look around and see if there is a potential for some savings, energy savings for the City of Livingston, correct?
Correct. Some of it is just collecting information. Some of it would just have authorization to collect new information. Plus, we want to make sure you guys know that we're going to be on site, we're going to be in their facilities. So we may just need someone to allow us, give us access to some facilities or show us where. So I'm not asking for, you know, agreement to do anything or obligation to do anything just to allow us to come and collect some information, so we can bring back some information to you guys.
Is there any questions for Mr. Stone? Okay.
So this is just, we're authorizing just phase one?
That's right.
That's all that we're talking about?
That's correct.
I make that motion.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Ken Dodson.
Second.
Second by Alderman Bill Lender. Is there any discussion?
Just a quick question. What other places have you worked with, what are the projects close to you that you've been a part of?
So I'm more than, what I'd like to do with this already is some of that is proprietary that we don't quite want to share or open up forum. But I have prepared a packet to send to you guys to follow up and detail some of that if that's acceptable to you. But I can tell you there's two municipalities within fifty miles of Livingston that we're working with.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments from Mr. Stone? Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor. All right, all for the motion, let it know we're saying aye. I oppose likewise. Okay, motion passed. Brian, you can just skip with me and I'll be talking to all the supervisors and giving them your name and telling them if you may be contacting you, okay?
Thank you. Stay clear of me in the next minute.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. All right. Item number five is we have got a new program that we have started in-house. Commercial driving license. Commercial driving license is what we have started in, a program that we have started in-house. I've got here with us Mr. Michael Hayes and Mr. Richard Bennett. They will come up and talk to the council exactly what this program is and all of its benefits.
We're going to be doing the E O D teach training for C D L drivers here at C D. As of February seventh, two thousand twenty-two, there was no federal regulations requiring C D L drivers to complete the E O D teach training. And they'll have to take this course to be eligible to go down to the state and take their test. With that being said, they'll have to do the theory portion, which is bookwork. Richard will be giving them the theory portion of it, doing as far as the knowledge part, Richard's up, correct?
Yes. It's just a program that goes through J J Keller. They're going to be doing just all the different bookwork that you would do as far as like studying the manual for C D Ls. And then once they get that done, they'll go and get their permit. And then once they're done with their permit, they'll start the behind the wheel with Michael.
So behind the wheel is the driver will be going out with me, will go out on the road. And we'll be doing driving, they'll have range, they'll be doing back end, alley doping and things of that nature to get them a certificate so they can go take the test. If they don't have a certificate, they can't go down to the B M V and test at all. So this is a southern house that we're doing. I think the cost is two, the cost is two hundred dollars per student versus sending them out to the private sector. That's around forty-five hundred, attack one hundred and sixty air pores. So doing it in-house will help our drivers speed up the process. I think right now we have six drivers ready to start, is that correct?
I think most of you know that when to change the rules of commercial driving license really made a hardship on cities and counties and the private sector as well. So this will be a savings of about four thousand dollars per operator. Also, which we put them through this program, as you're aware of, we've got the agreement that our attorney went through that that they will be with us for years. And if not, they're going to have to pay a portion of this back to the city. So we wouldn't be out a lot of money. All that kind of circles back to where we are now. So but the program will start in January. And anything else you'd like to say? Y'all have any questions?
How many licensed C D L drivers do we have?
I've got a list in there of roofs and I couldn't tell you, but I'm I'm going to, I'm going to guess twelve.
So this program, we do see it always stay in the house. I mean, we're not going to do the higher twelve and then open it up for other?
I think I'm pretty sure why we have it set up, we're going to test the city employees doing this. And keep in mind, they still have to go down to the B M V and still do their pre-trip. All they're doing with us is getting our training and getting a certificate so they can take down there just to be eligible to take the pre-trip when they're driving test. We can't give the pre-trip.
Do you have your certifications and everything?
Yes, yes.
Except your?
So certifications, David is, is you have to have your C D Ls for two years or you haven't been an instructor for two years. I've had my C D Ls since two thousand and fifteen.
And you might want to tell them about the state did come out, the Tennessee Department of Safety did come out, correct?
Yes, the Tennessee Department of Safety did come out. She came and talked to us to kind of help us as we were starting out, knowing what all to do and what all we're supposed to have in each student's file. Where there's a list of a lot of different things that they have to have. And then the state will also be auditing us to make sure that we're doing everything that we're supposed to be doing with each student and making sure we have all our paperwork.
And there there's a list of stuff that they gave us that we have to do and go through to check off. They'll have to sign off on it. And like Richard said, they will come in and talk to us and look at it and make sure we're doing it correct. And I'm pretty sure once we did one or two, the state will come back in and look and make sure we are doing what we're supposed to do.
I was a little concerned with some liability issues, given the fact that we would be doing some trainings or reaching out to our insurance provider, company partners. And this is, the majority of Tennessee cities and counties are doing this, doing it in-house. So yes, we are covered from agency. Is there any questions?
We need a motion on this?
No, no, this is just for informational purposes.
You are going to do this with manual transmission cross?
Mayor, all we have, I really think, is this manual transmission yet? Because if they test them automatically?
That is a difference.
Yes, sir. If they were, they tested, what they have to drive. They test them automatically, then they can only drive them automatically.
That is a difference, yes, sir.
Most of our drivers will be testing for for the B state.
I'm all for it.
I said, they're they're still going to have to go down to the state and still do their pre-trip. They're driving through there.
Okay, thank, thank you all very, very much. Okay, does anybody have any other comments?
Well, I just want to thank the city workers and the fire department and the police department for the square. Man, it is beautiful. And it sure helped the people, I'm sure, in the country, uh, Christmas of the country. It's nice.
I've had people comment to me, how very wise and everything. And I commend everybody who worked on it. I mean, it's pretty stellar. Yeah. They did.
They did.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'd just like to commend whoever got this grant for the downtown redevelopment. That's awesome. That is, that is cool.
Right.
A really good deal.
Yeah, I believe this control was mandatory. They did that.
Good job, girl.
Go ahead.
I got something to say too. Can I speak up right now?
Sure.
You got a few of you, you got a little sleepy. I've got some free eggs. I'm glad just we hadn't passed for the traffic signals, they pushed the button for walking, dog walk. I work at Monterey, British Farmers of Monterey, Tennessee, there for thirteen years. And I see every day when I come home on Monterey, my wheat plant, there's a lot of people up there using those traffic lights. I see little walk-on kids or students from eight-year-old kids to grownups pushing the button and everything. And I think some of the stuff I do, the Houston needs around here, because you know, if it's safer, I don't want nobody up here being hit, you getting, having an accident, getting killed. I mean, we got a beautiful town here. We got, you know, you all are men and ladies, you all do a good job. And I'm pleased for that. But I think every day when I come to the home for Monterey, that's the best thing happens for truckers, for anybody, they stop, they see it, they stop. To give the pedestrians the right of way and everything. And I think this has been the best thing for Livingston to have, because I see it every day. Any size kids, the pedestrians, older people too. You know, I think this is the best thing in Livingston's everything. And I appreciate you folks, all your hard work. And I got another thing real quick, and I'll leave you standing. Any mornings, sometimes when I go to work here through Livingston or drive through, some of the traffic lights, like in front of the Harvings or something like that, sometimes someone outside, they'll stay like red about two, three seconds and they'll go green real fast and they come back up to red again. And down there towards, has, what, I have a friend with them, Hubble House, I know some mornings when I go through there, sometimes it'll go green real quick, sometimes it'll go red. And I know there's a way that somebody can look into that and get it looked at. Because sometimes people tries to beat it. And I don't try to beat it and everything. And I'm going to see if you all see to it, we can be fixed by that, because that's a safety issue. And I thank you for that.
Thank you, Danny Gray. Can you look into the the traffic lights down there if it folks in front of those lights? All right, and maybe get some enforcement out there. All right, and maybe get some enforcement out there. Okay, thank you, Danny. Thank you very much. Is there any other public comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Vice Mayor Dodson, seconded by Alderman Lender. Any discussion? All four of the motion, let it know we're saying aye. I'll oppose a lifetime or adjourn.